Mobile City Council Tuesday, April the 15th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Tony Legere, Public Safety Chaplain. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence following the pledge.
Good morning, and I greet you from the strong and resolute Mobile Police Department. Good morning to all. Our Father, I honor you here today in this, the city gates. And we gather here in the strong name of Christ with Thanksgiving in our hearts. And we pray that you would bless a city like ours. For your word says, "Bless is the nation whose God is the Lord." And so we honor you here, Lord, even in these first seconds of our community meeting. Would you favor us today with clarity as we continue to be motivated by what betters our community? Praise you, bless our leaders who give us guidance today, and we'll honor you in Christ's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer, please? Thank you. Many of you have probably already heard about the passing of Mary Zogby. For those of us who were here on this council and in the administration, and surely within the city of Mobile itself, Mary Zogby's name is a familiar one. If you've come to council meetings or have been involved in city councils for any time, you have heard the word or the name "Zogby" thrown around quite a bit. And that is because Mary Zogby was the champion of the Zogby Act, which created our mayor council form of government back in 1985. Mary worked with a couple of other people that you would recognize as well when she was in the House of Representatives. And she always liked to defer to them and say, "Hey, it wasn't just me. I had other people working with me." And that was Beth Marietta Lyons, who was in the House, and the late Senator Michael Figures. They all came together to create the law creating this mayor and council form of government. But Mary died on Saturday following a brief illness. Her political career spanned 15 years in the House of Representatives. And following her time in the legislature, Mary worked for the Boys and Girls Club. She was the executive director there for 14 years. And following her time at the Boys and Girls Club, she continued her community service, serving on numerous boards and with organizations. And later on in life, she became an avid painter. She was a member of the VIA Senior Center, loved painting, loved art, and spent a lot of her time there. She was also very active in her church. Mary has been a personal friend of mine for many, many years. She and some other ladies had lunch every month where they discussed primarily politics. If you know Mary Zogby, you know she enjoyed politics and everything else under the sun. So they invited me to be a part of their group. And these are all ladies who are about 20 years older than me. So it was great fun for me. Mary was a role model to many, a mentor, and she will be sorely missed. Her funeral is tomorrow. Visitation begins at 8:00, the funeral at 9:00. And this will be at St. Pius Catholic Church on Sage Street. If you would all please, a moment of silent prayer in remembrance of Mary Zogby.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave. Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. Welcome to our April 15, 2025, meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including a cell phone, please at this time put it on the off of the vibrated position, the off of the vibrated position. Any person that is designed to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is designed to speak to a council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk Office no later than 2:00 PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified and pertain to the city of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given a proper notice to the City Clerk Office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the ending of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who recognizes any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of Venice of April the 8th.
So move, second.
After moving second into discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Venice approved.
Communications from Mayor Stimson.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see everyone here. We have a lot of students here. All you students, raise your hand over there and wave at us. We have a lot of athletes up in the top. Good to see y'all. And coasties here in the front, so thank y'all for being here. It's not often we have almost a full house, so this is going to be an exciting morning, I think. So I want to just follow up with what Councilman Gregory said about Mary Zogby. She truly had an impact on so many lives. I had the opportunity to actually work with her when she was leading the Boys and Girls Club. And she left her mark, and we'll be forever grateful. So I would join saying, please keep the family in your thoughts and prayers. Got three announcements and then a couple of proclamations to read. The first announcement has to do with we want to invite all Mobileans to a pair of special events occurring on the same day as the National Day of Prayer. Typically on the National Day of Prayer, we'll have a gathering at noon out in front of Government Plaza. But this year, we're partnering with the National Day Prayer Foundation and the Alabama National Day Prayer Task Force. And so Thursday, May 1st, we'll be at Brookley by the Bay and have a sunrise service. That's the property that's just east of Brookley Airfield. And it'll start at 6:00 AM. Gates open at 5:00. And then that evening, there'll also be a sunset service. And that starts at 6:00 PM. Again, the gates open at 5:00. That's Thursday, May 1st, Brookley by the Bay. And it'll be an opportunity for us to all join, all denominations, and pray for our city and pray for the nation. Also, for the Mobile's first ever poet anthology featuring local writers and poets. It's led by Mobile poet laureate Dr. Charlotte Pence. Is Dr. Pence here today? Okay. Anyway, I want to thank her for putting this anthology together. The new book is titled, "We Did It First." It's poems from poets of Mobile, Alabama. The release event will be Thursday, April 17th, two days from now, at 5:30 PM at the Mobile Arts Council Gallery. Then the proclamations, I would like to start with the Coast Guard proclamation. And I would ask our Captains Lugo and Captain Vegas to meet me at the podium. For those that don't know, this is something that we do every year. This is something very special from an interaction standpoint, from the Coast Guard, from the city of Mobile. And we did this proclamation to put an expression of appreciation for what they do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, the people and TV cannot hear.
Can't hear at all, okay. So anyway, what I was saying was is that we do this every year. An appreciation to the Coast Guard. Mobile is a Coast Guard city. Have been, had that recognition for almost 20 years, or maybe 20 years. There are a lot of coasties that work here in the Sector Command and the air, 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 what is it, air training? Yeah. Aviation training. So anyway, thank y'all for what you do. Now read the proclamation. I think it's working. Yeah. So, "Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw the attention to the fact that sexual violence remains an intolerable violent crime with public health implications for every person in Alabama. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and violence impact women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, many of whom can and do experience acquaintance rape, stranger rape, gang rape, serial rape, date rape, sexual assault, incest, stalking, ritual abuse, sexual harassment, child sexual molestation, prostitution, and pornography. And whereas, we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support survivors and their significant others, and to ensure that survivors are not re-victimized. And where staff and volunteers of victim support programs in Alabama work year-round to encourage every person to advocate for victims and survivors' rights, plus the restoration of peace in every home. Therefore, we, the citizens and community members of Mobile, have a duty to perform in an environment that is free from all forms of sexual violence. And we have an obligation to not tolerate any form of sexual violence or threat of sexual violence within the confines of our influences, which includes threatening behavior that results in physical or emotional injury to any person. And whereas, we have a responsibility to teach our children, youth, and adults to become aware of the impact of sexual violence in our community, and we commit ourselves to take action and vow to take a stand against sexual violence in the homes and community. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in the city of Mobile. Congratulations, and thank you for what y'all did to bring attention to this. Many of you are glad for what you did.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Our service and our community can't tolerate these acts that still persist in our community and within our service. And they run contrary to the Coast Guard's core values of honor, respect, and devotion to duty. And we thank you for recognizing that, Mr. Mayor, and having this be the Awareness Month for sexual assault prevention and response. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for y'all's services. Couple more proclamations and then after the month. So do we have Danielle Little and Tiffany Harris-James? Yeah, so if y'all can approach the podium. And anybody else that's with you that would like to join? And I'll join you in just one moment. Okay? Whereas Administrative Professionals Day, established in 1945, honors the invaluable contributions of administrative professionals who are essential to the effective operation of business and organizations. And whereas Future Leaders Working, a dedicated nonprofit organization, strives to empower young parents by providing workforce development and mentorship, facilitating their transition into the administrative field. And whereas the Amazing Admins Event, organized by Future Leaders Working, serves to celebrate Administrative Professionals Day by recognizing the dedication and achievements of administrative professionals within our community. And whereas this event not only honors 12 exemplary administrative professionals, but also promotes mentorship opportunities through Future Leaders Working Academy, fostering professional growth and community development. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2025, as Amazing Admins Day in the city of Mobile.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, staff and guests. Thank you on behalf of Future Leaders Working for this proclamation. Future Leaders Working is a nonprofit organization that identifies, supports, and develops young parents in Mobile City and in the county. We support young parents aged 18 to 30. The young parents go through an academy where they receive instruction in general and construction administration. The goal is to help them find employment within 30 days or less after completing the academy. Our Amazing Admin Symposium acknowledges administrative professionals, whether they are executive assistants, project managers, coordinators, and anyone who moves the needle in their organization. Thank you to our sponsors, City Councilman William Carroll, Cadillac and Bank Plus, because you keep the program absolutely free for our young parents. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much for what you all do. This next proclamation was sent to us by Governor Ivey and asked that we read it at the city, asked that I read it at the city council meeting. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas the state of Alabama and the city of Mobile recognize the importance of honoring and commemorating the 250th anniversary of the founding of our nation. And whereas the events of 1775 that began the revolution the year before independence was declared are significant moments that signaled the creation of a national identity and unity of purpose that transcended national geographic, cultural, and societal divides. And whereas on the evening of April 18th, 1775, with impending hostile action from the British Army in Boston, Massachusetts, Paul Revere and William Dawes, along with other alarm riders, undertook a perilous ride to alert everyone in the countryside of the coming danger. And whereas preceding their departure from Boston, a pre-arranged signal was set in the Old North Church depot to ensure the message got out and did not solely rely on just one or two alarm riders. And whereas the two lanterns that were the signal were immortalized in Henry Wadsworth Longfellow's poem, "Paul Revere's Ride", as "One if by land and two if by sea", and have become an enduring symbol of American vigilance, perseverance, and preparedness in the face of adversity. And whereas we're reminded 250 years later that the call for unity and the call to service, each other is no less reverent today than it was then. And whereas a national initiative has been proposed by the United States Semi-Quintessential Commission that two lights be displayed in public space across the country for all to see, marking that significant anniversary in April 2025 and the beginning of the 250th anniversary commemorations leading to the Declaration of Independence on July 4th, 2026. And whereas the state of Alabama and the city of Mobile support and encourage community events that promote patriotism, unity, and reflection in our shared history. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby endorse the national initiative and proclaim Friday, April 18th, 2025, as two lights for tomorrow day in the city of Mobile. As an aside, when Paul Revere made his ride, he rode by Captain Isaac Hall's house. Captain Isaac Hall was my great-great-great-grandfather. Thank you very much. So Captain, I mean Chief Pierre, Chief Melvin, would you step forward, please, and give Officer of the Month? Shana threw me off over here. Melvin Jones.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, staff, ladies and gentlemen of the council and community. Want to give the pleasure of introducing you, Officer of the Month of March of 2025, Officer Michael Schimberger. He answered 127 calls for service, assisted with 24 backings, facilitated eight felony arrests, and completed 24 misdemeanor arrests. Just a quick overview of what he did. On March 3rd, Officer Schimberger, while riding with the two-person unit, responded to a robbery alarm at PNC Bank located at 2901 Spring Hill Avenue. Upon arrival, it was determined that the subject had passed a note demanding money to the teller. And with the officers quickly in the area, Officer Schimberger took the subject into custody without incident, and the subject was arrested for robbery first degree. On March 7th, Officer Schimberger, along with other units, responded to a burglary call on Imogen Street. When they arrived, they took a subject into custody. It was determined that this subject or individual, during their investigation, discovered that he illegally entered the victim's residence to do a crime therein. And the subject was charged with burglary second degree. Last but not least, March 28th, 2025, Officer Schimberger, while on routine patrol, when he observed a vehicle without a tag led to a traffic stop near Airport Boulevard in Sage. After stopping the vehicle, it was learned that the driver had several outstanding warrants. The car is also occupied by another subject. During inventory search incident, two arrests, a stolen gun that was stolen out of the jurisdiction of Pasagulla PD, methamphetamine, drug paraphernalia, and several likely stolen credit cards were discovered in the vehicle. The subject was placed in jail and charged with illegal possession of credit and debit cards, and the passenger was also charged with various crimes. Officer Schimberger's instincts, eagerness, and dedication have proven him to be a valuable member of the Mobile Police Department. His commitment to the safety and service of the citizens of Mobile is demonstrated in his everyday performance. It is with tremendous pride and pleasure to present to you all Officer Michael Schimberger as Officer of the Month for March 2025.
Mr. President, that concludes my remarks.
I have a special introduction this morning. We have a brand-new person in town. She's not that brand-new anymore, I don't guess. I think you've been here a little over a month now. But there is a new executive director at the Mobile Botanical Gardens, and her name is Dr. Cynthia Klimmer. And I had invited her to come this morning to introduce herself so that everybody can get a look at her and listen to everything and know who to point to. And also to find out more about her, because Dr. Klimmer has an exceptional resume. When I read about her, I said, "Oh, my goodness. We are so fortunate to have a woman of this caliber come to be the executive director at our gardens." And I had to wonder what y'all promised her to get her here, because this is just incredible. We are so fortunate to have her here. Most recently, Dr. Klimmer has served as a public gardens manager for the city of Austin's Parks and Recreation Department. She managed the Zilker Botanical Garden, the historic Mayfield Cottage and Gardens, and the city's Community Gardens Program with more than 25 sites. So we are, again, very fortunate to have Cynthia here with us. And if you would come to the podium and just provide a little bit more detail about the plants at the gardens and more about your resume and what brought you to Mobile. And there are some board members here with Dr. Klimmer this morning. So we thank you for coming and being a part of this and for sharing Cynthia with us this morning. I know y'all are busy out at the gardens.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregory. And good morning, and it's such a pleasure to be here, council members, staff, and community. It is my pleasure to be at the gardens, and I feel very fortunate to be here. Mobile is just the most lovely city, and I'm so delighted to be moving here. My husband is currently still back in Austin. He has the unfortunate task of getting the house ready. So he's leaving away this week while I get to be here in this lovely temperatures that we're having. My background is in horticulture. I loved plants and gardening growing up and playing out in the piney woods of East Texas at my grandparents' house and in Girl Scouts and all sorts of organizations that I was in growing up. And that led me to study horticulture in college. I'm an Aggie, so y'all will have to just allow me that. I went to Texas A&amp;M and studied horticulture. And what I came to find out was that I loved nature, but what I really loved was sharing it with people. I did an internship at the Dallas Arboretum and just loved connecting people with plants and nature. A lot of people drive down the road and just see a green haze. They don't really know what they're looking at. So it's just like anything else. If you can learn a little bit more about it and connect with it, you begin to understand and value it and find out that it's just wonderful. And so I look forward to working at the garden. Most of my career was in nonprofit management of public horticulture, but I had the great pleasure of working for the city as a municipal employee and learned so much and decided that for the last part of my career, I felt like I could be most effective moving back to the nonprofit side. But boy, those years of municipal employment and going to council meetings and working with council members and working on getting things passed and approved was such an education, and I think that'll be to my benefit here. I'm very proud to work on a city site and on city grounds. So we don't take that lightly. And I feel my mandate is certainly to continue improving the grounds. And there's some restoration work needed. But my real specialization is in programming and events and exhibits that draws the community in. We want to reach across the city and partner. And as y'all know, collaborations and partnerships are so important. So we want to provide things that draw people in, both from the city and beyond, and to get some of those tourism dollars going and really make the garden a showplace for the city and to just have lots of programming. We've got lots of stuff coming up, and I look forward to meeting y'all down the road. Hopefully, come out to the garden and see us and let us know from within your districts who we might be able to partner with so that we're making sure we're serving the whole city. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And I know you've got something coming up with the Mobile Museum of Art, and that just looks fantastic.
We do. We're having a joint camp. They're right down the street, so it just makes sense that we'll partner with them. And plant sales, kids programs, summer camps, all sorts of arts programs. One of the things that was near and dear to me about horticulture was that it's both an art and a science, and we infuse both of those together at the garden. So yeah, thank you so much. And thank you, Councilmember Gregory, for all your support.
You are very welcome, and welcome to Mobile again.
Thank you.
Councilmember William Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask the members of the Learning Tree to come down to the podium. I have a proclamation for you guys this month, an awareness of the Autism Awareness Month, and I'd like to read it for you guys. Hey, morning. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Autism Spectrum Disorder, ASD, is a complex developmental condition that affects communication, behavior, and social interaction and impacts individuals of all racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic backgrounds. Approximately 1 in 36 children in the United States is diagnosed with autism. And whereas April is a time dedicated to raising greater awareness about ASD, promoting understanding, acceptance, and celebrating the unique strengths and abilities of children on the spectrum. And whereas this month provides an invaluable opportunity to learn about ASD, explore effective intervention, and discuss how everyone can contribute to creating a more supportive environment and change the autism community. And whereas Autism Awareness Month amplifies the voices of the autism community and advocates policy change that ensures equal access to services and opportunities. It is time to celebrate the unique talents and strengths of children with ASD, prompting autism acceptance and inclusion within our society. And whereas the Learning Tree Incorporated, located in Mobile, Alabama, has been a beacon of hope..." has been a beacon of hope, support, and education for children within autism, with autism and other development disabilities, providing specialized programs and compassionate care to help every child reach their fullest potential. And now therefore I, Councilman William C. Carroll of District 2 and the members of the Mobile City Council do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Autism Awareness Month done at the city of Mobile on this day, April 15th, 2025.
Thank you Councilman Carroll. On behalf of the Learning Tree, I want to sincerely thank the city of Mobile for this incredible honor in recognizing Autism Awareness Month with this proclamation. At the Learning Tree, we're committed to creating opportunities for growth, understanding, and inclusion. This proclamation encourages us to continue advocating, educating, and standing alongside individuals touched by autism. Thank you again to the city council and the entire community for your continued support. Together we're making an impact.
Thank you all so much for y'all works.
Mr. President, I'd like to call Shad Collins and Marcus Flucker.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
To the members of the council, to everybody in attendance. Today we want to recognize our MPRD Youth Basketball 2024 and 2025 City League and State Champions. Just want to start with a little nugget while we still got everybody in the room. The city of Mobile made history this year. We became the first city in the 25-year history of the ARPA State Tournament where we had two teams play each other from one city for the state tournament. So and we accomplished that feat twice. And that was the 8U Division for the boys and the 12U Division for the girls. And that was Spring Hill Wildcats, 8U, Peters Park 8U, 12U, Bush Park Lady Bingers, and Teleport Cougars. Forget about around the park, yes. Like I say, that's a testament to our coaches and our parents and everybody that support us in Mobile Parks and Rec Department. And we appreciate them and we just wanted to acknowledge them as well. For the sake of the meeting, when we call you up, when you come take the picture, we ask that you exit out the building and take your pictures outside as well. So we'll start with the girls division. Right now we had an 8U Peters Park Panthers coached by Stephen McCants, Assistant Coach Dakota Coleman.
They could come up here because they so short. Yeah, they could come up here.
Oops, need to get on that.
And that was Peters Park 8U. We had a 12, 12 and under city champion and also state champion, Bush Park Lady Bingers. Coached by Leanne Watson, Angelica Manassas, and Carla Stimmel. As you guys know that this Bush Park team, this is a repeat for them. They were also state champions last year as well.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Not in attendance today was the 10U Cottage Hill Park Steelers. So want to congratulate them as well. Cottage Hill Park Steelers 10U. Now we move to the boys division. For 4U, we got Harmon Suns coached by Dwight Williams and Jarvis Prejean. 5 and under champions, we got Peters Park Panthers coached by Terrence Golden, Devon Slay, and Larry McMillan Jr. Six and under also Peters Park Panthers coached by Trey Hall, Terrence Ball Jr., and Larry McMillan Jr. Then next we had a 7 and under Peters Park Panthers coached by Sam Young, Kaz Young, and Robert Laugh.
Wait, one thing, sorry. Pull the television down. There we go. I couldn't see your face.
In this 8U Division, this is the division that I said that we finished 1 and 2 in the state end. So we got a different situation here for the city champion. The city champion was the 8U Spring Hill Wildcats coached by Dakota Barton, Tynel Thomas, Jamaica Lofton. But they were also the ARPA State Runner-Up Champion as well. They were also the ARPA State Runners as well. So then we have the city, the city league runner-up, 8 and under Peters Park Panthers, and the state champion Peters Park Panthers coached by Larry McMillan, Keith Lucet, DeRozan Stanley. And the 9 and under division, we had the Spring Hill Wildcats coached by Dominic Pitway, Regis Starworth, and Rashard Butler. As you can see, most divisions belong to either Peters Park or Spring Hill. That's just a testament to the coaches and the work that they put in and the parent support that they have at those two parks. For the 10 and under, the 10 and under city champions and also state champion is also the Spring Hill Wildcats coached by Rashard Butler, Dominic Pitway, and Regis Starworth. Two-time state champions Spring Hill Wildcats, 9U 10U. And everybody who's an Alabama Trail and Tide fan, y'all should know that. You know, as far as the verify line goes, he played his part in recreation at Spring Hill and he was also coached by Rashard Butler, Dominic Pitway, and Regis Starworth. So they've been putting out talent for a long time. The 11U Division, Spring Hill Wildcats coached by Darren Ray Jr., Patrick McConico, and Chris Davis. In the 12U Division, the champion was the Teleport Cougars. They are not in attendance, so we just want to give them a round of applause as well. That concludes all the champions from Mobile Parks and Recreation 2024-2025 Basketball Season. We thank everybody in attendance and you guys have a good day. Right now we have Mrs. Ladera Bill who coaches the Mobile Hurricanes to talk about her season.
Good morning to the city council, Mayor Stimson, our city administrators, and our members of the city of Mobile community. It is with honor and a pleasure today that I have the privilege of recognizing our Mobile Hurricanes therapeutic basketball team and their accomplishment of earning a bronze medal in the Special Olympics State Basketball Tournament, which was held in Montgomery, Alabama on March 7th, 2025. Our team includes Mr. Carlos Atkins, Dunsel Brown, Edman Patton, Victor Powell, David Johnson, Tyler Smith, Andrew Hubbard, Antonio Denson, and Mr. Horace Withers. And I would be remiss if I did not announce publicly that Mr. Horace Withers ran into a burning building back in January and saved his girlfriend's two-year-old baby. So besides basketball, these guys are heroes in the community. The Mobile Hurricanes is led by Recreation Leader and Assistant Coach, Mr. Quanda West. And myself as a therapeutic recreation specialist and head coach, I'm Ladera Bill. And we want to say thank you to the city of Mobile and also to our Mobile Hurricanes. And thank you to the city for supporting and encouraging our gentleman. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Penn?
Thank you so much. I just want to give a big shout out to all the coaches and the players today. It's amazing Mobile has so much talent. When you just think about sports, I mean, we lean in every aspect. And so to see these young people doing an amazing job, hats off to them, hats off to the parents as well and family members that support it. And I just want to give a big shout out to Bush Park in District 1, back-to-back girls state champions. They are amazing and so I'm so proud of them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Carroll.
I was asked a few minutes ago, why is it that Mobile is always so successful in basketball and these organized sports? But I just want to take a second and remember Marion Shepherd and what he did to organize what we used to call Summer League Basketball and City League Basketball in the mid-'80s and developed this program. If it wasn't for Marion Shepherd and those coaches at that time to start this program, we wouldn't have what we have today. And it was, it shows in how our kids are represented throughout the state in the programs in which our Parks and Recreation System are running, that it was successful and very successful and it continues to be successful. And we need to make sure that we do everything that we can to keep our doors open to keep these programs going. Even going back to re-implementing our football teams that we had in City Park also. Because those coaches really gave us a foundation to start from and our kids are successful. And you can see just by the look on their eyes and the attitudes they had, what joy they have in it and what they've done. So thank you to- and the attitudes they had, what joy they have in it and what they've done. So thank you to those old coaches, and then thank you to all the coaches that uh, uh, help to coach and mentor these kids, because I'm a coach, and it takes a lot to control a seven year old kid when he's out there trying to learn the game. And I really appreciate everything that you've done. And one last note. Corey, I want you to realize that eighty percent of all these parks are in District Two. And all those kids come from hopefully or mostly District Two, which is the greatest district in the city of Mobile.
Adoption of the agenda.
Second. Proper move and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for wave the noise ordinance on April the nineteenth in Mardi Gras Park, May seventeenth in Melavana Park, April nineteenth on St. Francis Street, April nineteenth in Mardi Gras Park, April nineteenth in Cathedral Square, May the fourth in British Park, July eleventh, August eighth, and September twelfth on North Jackson Street.
So moved. Second. Proper move and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings today. It's a public hearing to consider a vacation fee as a condition of the vacation of City Right of Way located on the west side of Knollwood Drive, just north of Meadow, Medical Park Drive.
And this opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Malcolm Banks.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to address you for a second. Um, you challenged me.
Sir, 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 you can only address me.
Oh, but it's part of my.
You can only address me.
Okay. Well, um, just to mention, um, a while back, back in twenty twenty one, Mr. Mayor was on my podcast, and he said, we need more people like you back in Mobile. Um, I was living in Montgomery at the time. So since then, I've been doing my part since I moved back to do everything I can in the community, whether it be through the youth, whether it be through my nonprofit. And I just really wanted to thank him for giving me that challenge, because I made it my business to really make a difference. Um, it's that time again. Elizabeth Crayons, we did an amazing job last year. We collected about three thousand books. Um, so I want to thank to anybody that had participated with us. We're looking for more help this year. We want to reach a goal of five thousand books. Um, we give these books back out to the kids in the city, whether it be coloring books, reading books, coloring utensils. Last year, we grew it by having resources and vendors who came and were to be able to give resources to the parents. We had health screenings. We had jump houses, hot dogs, drinks, cotton candy, all types of fun. So we're looking to start May first to collect these books, to collect the coloring utensils, um, whatever sponsors or partners want to join with us. We want to have a good time and be able to make a difference in the enrichment and creativity of the kids in the city.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Banks, for all your hard works. Any questions or comments from this council?
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
I just want to thank Mr. Banks for coming down. Um, like the Mayor Stimson said, we need more young people doing things in our community, being active and engaged. And for you to have this passion in our community. So thank you so much for serving our city.
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Banks, if you would, please send a PDF of the date, time, and the activities. If there's any other requests, if you'd send those in at the proper time, please.
Will do.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Banks.
Thank you.
Deborah Ann Crabtree.
Miss, uh, Crabtree available. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, uh, Madam City Clerk, to the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Greetings, uh, Reggie Hill is my name. Before beginning, I want to, uh, offer my condolences to the family and loved ones of Mary Zogby as well. Uh, she, together with Senator, uh, Figures, um, opened the door for all citizens to have an equal opportunity at the table. Now, while in twenty twenty five, we might not be reflecting that, uh, still, I think it's necessary to, uh, remember the lives that actually made this thing possible. Um, I often tell the younger people in successful the future, uh, that local government is the most important. Every national movement, I believe, began at somebody at City Hall. Uh, just last month, we celebrated Jubilee, uh, going, um, across the Edmund Pettus Bridge in Selma. And what we don't necessarily recognize ever about this is the fact that for days and weeks and months, there was activity at City Hall that led to that demonstration, which eventually enabled the Voting Rights Act to be put in place. So a lot of people will ask, often question why I'm so adamant about coming here, but it's because this is where the real business takes place. It's necessary that we have that type of opportunity with our local government. So in that same fashion, I rise today, uh, to continue this pertinent conversation about the issues related to city mobile business. Now, while I would need to speak on chapter thirty eight and what we're seeing that was addressed before, chapter forty six, uh, some of this poor, uh, policing, um, these third party law firms, uh, the performance contracts where we actually want to see things done for our youth that we're not necessarily facilitating properly. We haven't heard anything on ARP funds, or that twenty six million dollars that was left out there, uh, these police home visits that just came up. It seems very questionable why that's happening, where we could have other, uh, means of engagement with our law enforcement officials. And then with the Spark and Recreation Department, with the amount of resources that are going around, and we have issues with the basketball goals at Stotz Park and at Kid Park, and these are in both, uh, parts of the city. And where there's affluent communities and less affluent communities, but we have resources to do all these other things like these eighty thousand dollar tennis lessons. Well, let's get to this Mobile Housing Authority, because I believe this is the most important thing that we have. I'm appreciative of Ms. Gregory bringing down, uh, the new executive director for Botanical Guards. Uh, we've had about three or four changes with the Mobile Housing Authority, but none of these people have come down here to speak or introduce themselves, so we really have no idea what's going on over there. We have a recovery act, uh, where this body is supposed to have oversight. We're looking at all these HUD fundings that's coming through Mr. Roberts' department, which I believe has been taken away from the tenant uses. Uh, we have these courting matters where we have, uh, issues between the city of Mobile and Mobile Housing Authority that are being based on a case by Ms. Trotter, who is sitting in the building today, who is, who her last, her property is the last development that is standing in between this airport going into place. And I'm going to talk about how the CEO of Apple Authority came down to not run the Mobile Housing Authority, but these matters are things that we're not discussing. But yet, we're all going to talk about this idea where we're concerned about public housing. We're concerned about affordable housing. We're concerned about the citizens quality of life. But yet, everything that we do up here usually goes against the grain of what that actually is. We know we don't have the time, but we have to tender these things into the record, and we'll continue this next week. Thanks for being on the floor.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Carroll.
Um, I, I, I didn't say anything about this last week, but, uh, I, I want to, um, uh, recall a statement from last week where Mr. Hill, uh, mentioned Christopher Brennan Carroll as a member of the Board of Zoning and Adjustments, and, uh, made statement that Christopher Brennan Carroll did not know what he was doing, or he said that he was not part of the board. Uh, I'd like to enter into record that Mr. Hill was correct, because Christopher Brennan Carroll does not serve on the Board of Directors of the Board of Zoning and Adjustments. Uh, he didn't even know what it was, and when he was contacted by subpoena from Mr. Hill, he had no idea. The person that sits on the BZA is Christopher Lewis Carroll, who was never contacted. I hope that there wasn't a willful and intention to vilify the person that sits on the board, or the intent to vilify an individual that sits on the board.
No, sir.
My notes was the first.
No, sir. No, sir. Have a seat, Mr. Hill. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Have a seat.
So, um, I, I would hope that there was no willful intent to vilify or embarrass a sitting board member, uh, being that the mistake in contact was made by Mr. Hill himself. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk.
Colette Hall regarding ordinance eighty eight zero sixteen.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Um, at this time, I would like to my, withdraw my request to speak until a later date.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Ordinance is held over sixty four zero fifteen. Consider rezoning property located at thirty three hundred Knollwood Drive from R one and B one to R three.
Motion lay over two weeks.
Second.
Proper move and second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Reynolds.
Uh, we had, uh, discussion about holding this over in our pre-council meeting, and I just can't seem to understand why we would hold it over. Uh, you know, the, it was suggested that maybe there's some negotiations that need to happen or something, but uh, this zoning request as put forward by way of an ordinance can't be modified in any way according to some negotiation that's happening. If you want changes to this zoning application, you have to do a whole different zoning application. And so holding this over for two weeks is really just prolonging the inevitable, which is uh, a, a discussion with the developer along with the residents in this area to try to find something that's reasonable and can be resolved. Uh, so, you know, Councilman Woods, this is his district, and, uh, you know, I don't really want to speak out of turn, but I, I believe he wants to, uh, vote this today. And, um, you know, I'm going to vote with him because this is his district.
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Woods. Um, I, Councilmember Reynolds hit the nail on the head. Um, you know, end of the day, uh, I think the conversation, um, is, is outside the scope of what this ordinance is. I mean, this is an ordinance for rezoning, not an ordinance for development, not an ordinance for a plan. So any discussion i- is outside of what this ordinance is for. This is, this is basically looking to, or this is looking to change something from R one and B one to R three. And again, I'm, uh, I'm not going to rehash everything that I've said in, in pre-council, but I, I think that, uh, we're getting the cart ahead of the horse here. We're looking at a rezoning application, not a permission to develop something. Um, end of the day, the, the, again, attending the community meeting, um, with eighty plus people there from the neighbors, um, attending planning commission, um, of which I'm, I'm the rep, the council representative on it, and then also looking at last week when this ordinance was introduced. Um, not once, not once in any three meeting have I, have I heard somebody that lives adjoining or in the, in the proximity step up and say, you know what, I, I, I think R three is a great op, a great decision for this, this piece of land, this property. Nobody, there's not been any support from any of the neighborhoods, from any of the, anybody that lives on Gerby Road, anybody that lives on Knollwood. There's not been any support. And again, this is a decision about rezoning, not a decision about what's going there. Um, with that, I, I, I'm a no on this. I don't see you holding this over. Um, holding this over isn't gonna, isn't gonna change anything. Um, you know, where retention pond goes, where, yeah, that, that's development. That's not rezoning. So I, I don't foresee, I, I think we're going to find ourselves here in two weeks exactly where we are. But, um, that, that's just me, and I'm just speaking for, um, the residents and the, the neighbors that I represent, and, um, so with that, I'm, I'm a no vote on holding this over.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Not, passed five to two. I'd lay over two weeks. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance eighty eight zero one six, authorized land exchange of properties located at thirty three twenty one Adams Street, three twenty one North Warren Street, three oh five Congress Street, and Lyons Street, not now needed for municipal purposes.
Motion to table.
Second.
Proper move and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item's table.
Eighty eight zero seventeen, authorized land exchange of properties located at six oh three Broad Street and twenty eight sixty five Phillips Street, not now needed for municipal purposes.
Motion to table.
No. No, this is okay. This is, yeah, this is okay. This is, um, most, so moved, Mr. President. This is Broad Street, six oh three Broad Street.
Yeah.
Mr. Carroll, discussion?
Yes, uh, uh, Mr. President, I've spoken to, uh, the Down the Bay Block Club and Down the Bay Community, uh, organizations on this and, uh, had to meet with the attorney that represents the, uh, land swap. Uh, also had the pastors from the surrounding churches who have properties abutting, the property on Broad Street, speak with them. Uh, the overwhelming majority of the residents, uh, was, were okay with the land swap, uh, for this facility. Uh, this is the old, uh, for those of us that grew up in the district and participated in the district. This is the old boxing academy, uh, that is at the corner of New Jersey Street and Broad Street, uh, which is now the, um, the, uh, Parks and Recreations Lands Facility where we handle a lot of our maintenance property. Uh, it's the intent of the people that are swapping with them to improve the property, make it better, have nice facility up there, and also clean up the remainder of the block. So the neighbors are okay with this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms., um, Ms. Carroll, so the neighbors are in favor of this one?
Yes. Yes, the na, the neighbors were in favor. The community, Down the Bay community was in favor. And also the, uh, across the street community was in favor of this. So this is, this has been well thought out. The organization actually reached out and talked to the various groups and had meetings. So this is a, a good move at this time.
Another discussion? Another discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes. Madam Clerk.
CIP resolutions held over zero nine five sixty four, transfer funds from project CIP D two, special project to housing improvement, plan fund District Two neighborhood improvements. Twenty one five sixty five, authorized contract with Gore American Conditioning for CIP Hillsdale Community Center H back replacement. Twenty one five sixty six, authorized contract with Harris Contracting Services for Miller's, Tremere, Ballfield, pole removal.
So moved.
Second.
Proper move and second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Mr. Reynolds.
Regarding zero nine five six four, this is, um, an effort by Councilman Carroll and many others to establish a housing revolving fund addressed at redevelopment of properties, um, supporting affordable housing um, in District Two specifically, but it's sort of the bones of the process that is applicable across the city. And why am I talking about this? This is his district, but it, but it applies to the city at large of, of a process that could be used to improve single family housing. And I think the city of Mobile needs to develop more single family housing, whether it be affordable or market rate. We received a letter, uh, just yesterday or the day before, Friday, I'm sorry, that, uh, says something to the effect of city's community development block grant applications for federal aid require it to demonstrate how it is affirmatively furthering the goal of housing affordability by removing the impediments, including the lack of supply. Not only does this program do that, but there are dozens of other programs that do that. And, you know, this letter we received is, you know, frankly ridiculous and a, a act of desperation apparently from the applicant on this zoning matter that we discussed earlier. I just felt it was important that we address that publicly, that I believe all of us on this city council and in this administration are taking, uh, affordable housing very seriously, and we're all taking strides and steps at a higher rate than probably anyone in the country at addressing it. Um, that's it. And congratulations, Mr. Carroll, on getting this, uh, program up, up off the ground.
Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Uh, Woods. I do want to join. I, I know that Councilman Carroll, this is a, uh, to say this is a passion project, um, is, uh, it, it's understating this. Um, I, I know the time that he's spending this, um, I do offer, I do want to say congratulations. Uh, I look forward to seeing this implemented, look forward to seeing how this improves, and, and Councilman Reynolds is right. Um, we do need all types of housing, affordable, market rate, uh, the, single family, multifamily. Um, it, it, it makes it, uh, we, we need everything to make the city go around and, and to continuously grow the city. Um, but I, I do want to say that I look forward to, to seeing how this works out. Um, do appreciate, uh, the time and effort that he's spent in that, and, um, that, that's it for me.
Another discussion?
Uh, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Carroll.
Uh, first, let me say thank you two for the compliments, uh, especially how it was you two that I really had to negotiate, navigate to, or through, to get to this other than the administration. Uh, secondly, let me say, let's not cross the lines or blur the lines when it comes to affordable housing Secondly, let me say, let's not cross the lines or blur the lines when it comes to affordable housing, and also the attempt to have a zoning and development in another district that, where we're trying to parallel the lines of interest. Hopefully, we're only trying to parallel the lines of interest on affordable housing. Thirdly, this is the only program in the city of Mobile that takes all the federal red tape out of the game and allows us to do things without the encumbrance of HUD and the CDB check, and also the qualified census tracts, and it gives us an opportunity to truly revitalize neighborhoods. This program is the first of its type in the city of Mobile. This program gives us the latitude to actually put projects out for bid, either through development, either through development or by typical low bid. I am proud to say that we are currently working on a deal now in the campground, not to do one or two houses, but to do maybe 12 or 13. And that will be our first go-around at this. This is probably the most impactful start to revitalizations of underserved neighborhoods that we have ever seen in the campground in the bottom. And I am proud to say, even though it took me two years to get to it, I'm proud to say that we finally got to it and have the ability now with the program to revitalize these areas. And let me not forget the administration, and especially Jamie, because I kept him here to get the final words down before we, right before Hurricane, the back and forth with Ricardo Woods and all the legal stuff. But everybody else that actually helped to get this done, the writing in the background and the knowledge base to have it done, I am very proud of this council to finally get to a point where we can actually pass it. So, thank you to all. But now, we finally have the money in place after this vote to actually get started and to actually start to see these new developments come out of the ground. Thank you, Mr. President.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over 47-446. Consider vacation of city right-of-way located on the west side of Knollwood Drive, just north of Medical Park Drive.
Motion to table.
Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I don't table.
01-567. Authorized agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation for detection equipment upgrades at intersections on Oshel Road. 08-569. Approved purchase order from fly motion for drone with camera. 21-571. Authorized contract with Jordan Dolas to provide racket-strinker services. 21-572. Authorized contract with Caleb Richardson to provide tennis lessons and clinics. 25-573. Accept a perpetual non-exclusive easement from the Mobile Area Water and Sewer Commissioners for the Africa Town Welcome Center. 37-574 and 575. Our proven applications for certificate of public convenience in necessity to operate a limousine service and sedan service.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolutions being introduced 31-577 through 65-87.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second.
Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules weigh, Madam Clerk.
31-577, 578, and 579. Are authorizing the mayor to apply, accept, and receive a grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation National Coastal Resilience Fund, a grant from National League of Cities Advancing Economic Mobility Rapid Grant Program, and a grant from the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration in support of the NAS Gulf Research Program. 37-580. Recommend approval to DVC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to BBQ Chicken on Airport Boulevard. 46-581. Honorarily rename the intersection at Donald and Steele Streets to honorary Francesca Hollis Reese Way. 60-582 and 583. Our proven award of special bonus to the officer of the month and the firefighter of the month. 60-584, 85, 86, and 87. Are determining appropriations to Community of Mobile, Inc., S-K-C Development Group, YMC-A, Ronald McDonald House Charities of Mobile, serve a public purpose and approving payment.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
CFP resolutions being introduced 01-588.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of this resolution as read.
Second.
Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass. I mean, rules weigh, Madam Clerk.
01-588. Authorized agreement with J&amp;A Contracting for McCann's Javers Tricentennial Sullivan and James M. Seals Jr. Parks for splash pad recoding.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time 01-589 through 01-604.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of Resolution 08-592, with the rest being laid over for one week.
Second.
Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules weigh, Madam Clerk.
08-592. Approved purchase order to CD Government for subscription to Aruba Network wireless access software.
So moved. Second.
Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Call for public hearings. 41-600. Call for public hearing to consider the application for a certificate of public convenience in necessity to operate a taxicab service scheduled April the 29th. 41-601. Call for public hearing to consider the vacation of city right-of-way for property located at the corner of Dolphin Street and Sage Avenue, scheduled May the 20th. 41-602. Call for public hearing to consider a vacation fee as a condition of the vacation of city right-of-way property located at the corner of Dolphin and Sage Avenue, scheduled May 20th.
So moved. Second.
Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings call.
Announcements.
District Four, Councilman Reynolds. District One, Councilman Penn.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to speak to the students at Scarborough Middle School, a school that I attended in District One, and I just want to commend Sergeant Robinson for their leadership skills. The students did an amazing job. They had to create a project where they created their own government, what they would like to see. And for me to come in and hear the different things that they would like was just pretty amazing. And so, I just want to commend that school and doing an amazing job in District One. We had an amazing time at the Dodge Community Center. We had an Easter egg hunt with partnering with Parks and Recs. Had a great time seeing family and the friends come out and enjoy theirsself. And again, I want to give a big shout out to Ms. Kidd. They had Money Matters Boot Camp right there in our community, Tomerville Branch Library. So, awesome job. Thank you so much for everything that you're doing to encourage our constituents to understand how to utilize their finances. Our upcoming events, tonight, we will have our Pride Area Community Meeting at New Shallow from 6:00 PM to 7:30. If you have any questions, please come out, and we'll be able to answer and just talk about some of the things that we're doing in the community. And then, this Thursday, I want to give a big shout out to the Kingdom Training Center. They will have their grand opening in District One. And so, we excited about the changes and processes and things that we're doing in District One. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Penn. District Five, Councilman Davis. District Two, Councilman Carroll.
Oh, Mr. President, it was quite a bunch of them, but I'm pretty sure that Ms. Gregory is going to cover at least two of them, because we're at the same places at the same time. But I attended the Chocolate Festival this weekend. It was also a judge out there. I think I may have committed a sin, Ben, that I gave up sugar for Lent, and it was just so much chocolate to taste. But it was quite the event, and congratulations to everyone that put that on. Also, Mobile Baykeeper downtown at Braided River had quite the crawfish boil, bringing attention to environmental causes and all the issues that are happening on our waterways, up and down the channels and out into the rivers and everywhere else. Also, Rock of Faith had quite the tea at Texas Street Park, well-attended, and so many people there. Glad to see everyone else. And just all the other events that we've championed this weekend, including the Police Chili Cook-Off that was in Cathedral Square this weekend, which is actually part of the crime prevention team. Those funds actually go towards their crime prevention efforts and the things that happen there. So, just so much happened this past weekend, and this weekend is even more crowded. I look forward to being out, being about, and being involved in all the public activities. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. District Six, Councilman Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to quickly just remind everyone, May 15th at 5:30, we'll have a District Six community meeting at Woodridge Baptist Church. Look forward to seeing everybody there. Again, that's May 15th at 5:30. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilman Woods. District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you. Since Councilman Carroll has already covered the Chocolate Festival and the Chili Cook-Off with the police downtown, I won't have to get into that. They were great. People teased me about having chocolate and chili in the same day and not too much time in between either one. Also, last night was the Pops concert out at Langen Park under the newly renovated amphitheater. It was a beautiful night. The music was terrific. Was happy to be a sponsor for that and hope to have more of these opportunities in the district. Coming up on April 29th, I will be joining Councilman Woods. We will be speaking to his current district, who will be transitioning into District Seven. Again, that will be Tuesday, April 29th, 6 o'clock PM. We'll be meeting at the Hampton Inn by Hilton. It's over in Providence Park. Postcards like this one have already gone out, so we hope to see all of those folks there. Also, coming up earlier in the day on the 29th, we will have our Public Safety Committee meeting. You may recall, we had to postpone because of sickness. So, good timing, actually, because we had the town hall meeting last week, and we'll be able to follow up on the information that we heard at the town hall meeting on gun violence with the questions and suggestions that were heard there. So, again, that will be next Tuesday after council meeting, 1 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Gregory. Councilman Penn, how did y'all advertise y'all Easter egg hunt?
Through our newsletters, as well as through social media.
Let me let you hear what that real Easter egg hunt would do for you.
Mobile's R&B and Throwbacks, 104.1 WDLT welcomes District Three Easter Egg Hunt, Saturday, April 19th, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM at Gilleyard Elementary School, 2757 Dolphin Island Parkway. Councilman CJ Smalls invites you to join us for family, friends, and fun, sponsored by Drug Council Education, Franklin Primary Health, The Royal 25, Cumulus Media, and Gilleyard Elementary. We look forward to seeing you there. Come on out. Bring your family. Bring your friends. Bring your husband. Bring your wife. Bring your grandma, your grandpa. Just come on out and have some fun with us, Saturday, April the 19th, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM at Gilleyard Elementary School. Mobile's R&B and Throwbacks, 104.1 WDLT.
That's what our real Easter egg hunt does. Greetings to the citizens of District Three. And also, we will have a community meeting for the Morningside Community and the Dog River Community on this Tuesday, April 22nd, 6 o'clock PM, at the Morningside Elementary School. Again, inviting all the residents, her prominent residents so far, and they are very excited about this community meeting. Anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
Properly moving second and in discussion.
Yes, Mr. President. I just would like to say that, as you see during this council meeting, it's only a couple, well, only one person, actually, all the council members said something to about any time they're doing something in that district, and it's targeting District One. You know why? Because we the number one district. Thank you, Mr. President.